When we remove your covers, thank you. Let us bow. Our Father and our God in heaven, we come to thee in prayer and thank you for the opportunity to meet and represent the citizens of Camden County. We pray for wisdom. We pray for guidance. We thank you for all that you have given us. We're extremely grateful for the bounty of this earth, even the rain. Father, be with us tonight as we decide important things and help us be humble in our spirit toward each other. All of these things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in visible liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Sheikah.
Commissioner Reddick is absent. All of us are present.
Okay, we need to make a couple of changes to the agenda. We need to remove items one and two and add the presentation from Camden Missions. Can I get a motion on that?
Motion to approve as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
With the changes.
All in favor? All right, now can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as stated?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We got a first and a second. All in favor? This brings us to the approval of the minutes. If there's no changes to the minutes from the August 20th public hearing and regular meeting, can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes as chairman as presented.
Second.
Got a first and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor? This brings us to our presentations. Shannon, are you up first? Or...okay, Mike's gonna do that.
I'm gonna reach.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, let me turn this thing on. Is that on? All right. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for giving me a couple of minutes this evening. Today, I've got the honor of issuing a proclamation recognizing September 17th, 2024, as National Voter Registration Day. Whereas the right to vote is a fundamental cornerstone of our constitutional federal republic, empowering United States citizens to have their voices heard and participate in the governance of our great nation; and whereas the right to vote is sacred and empowers individuals to shape the direction of our community, state, and nation; whereas Camden County, Georgia recognizes the gravity of fostering an engaged, informed electorate with resources, unimpeded access to participate in the electoral process, with the understanding that active participation in this constitutional process is vital to the well-being and progress of our community, state, and union; whereas September 17th, 2024, marks National Voter Registration Day, a day dedicated to raising awareness about voter registration opportunities and ensuring that every eligible United States citizen has the opportunity to register and vote in future elections. Now therefore be resolved that the Camden County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2024, as National Voter Registration Day in Camden County, Georgia. We urge all eligible United States citizens to seize this opportunity, register to vote, and engage in the constitutional process. Let us work together to strengthen our constitutional federal republic and to ensure that the values of freedom, equality, and civic participation continue to flourish in our great country, county, and nation. Proclaimed this third day of September, Ben L. Casey, Chairman, Camden County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to call up Ms. Shannon Nettles, who is our Camden County Election Supervisor. We have Rock and Dennis in the crowd. We'd like to have y'all come up as well, and Commissioners, if you'll come down for a picture, we'd like to present this to them. Oh, I didn't see you've got board members here too. I apologize about that.
There's a good place to take a camera and get a fix.
I don't know, I'm trying this one too.
And up. I got a Kodak. For some reason, it's a three picture thing.
Kodak, I didn't see that. It has the same button.
All right, now we're gonna have a presentation for Camden Missions. Pastor Ham.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today. We appreciate the important work the Board does for Camden County and are grateful for the chance to share how Camden Missions is contributing to the safety, stability, and well-being of our community. My name is Aaron Harvey, and I'm here as a volunteer presenter on behalf of Camden Missions, a longstanding vital organization in our community, and I'm honored to be here alongside James Hamm, the founding member of Camden Missions. Previously, the organization was referred to as Missions for Camden, but now we operate under the name of Camden Missions, just to shorten it up. Camden Missions is an evolving ministry designed to grow with and respond to the ever-changing needs of our beloved county. Our organization serves as a central hub for support, providing access to a wide range of services to ensure that no one in our community falls through the cracks. The ultimate purpose of Camden Missions is to empower the families and individuals of our community with unmet needs in Camden County by utilizing ministry and community services. We provide fury community meals, showers, mental health services and referrals, community garden, mentorship programs, and free income tax services. Through certified life skills programs, we aim to reduce anger, depression, suicide, and mental health encounters, offering another chance at life for those who seek it. Our vision is to keep Camden County safe by reducing crime. We achieve this by connecting families and individuals to the appropriate resources after a thorough screening process. By addressing true crisis and trauma, Camden Mission works to link those in need with the services and agencies best suited to help them. Camden Missions is actively engaged in several key initiatives, including providing weekly food programs, emergency lodging, hygiene packages, mental health intake and referral services, as mentioned previously, offering crisis support, financial literacy education, job preparation resources, and transportation assistance, coordinating efforts with local nonprofits, faith-based organizations, businesses, and government agencies to create a unified approach to serving those in need and addressing the gaps left by the absence of a coalition such as voluntary organizations, active in disaster, or VOAD. Our ask, since Camden County Mission or Camden Missions' vision aligns closely with some of the county's top strategic goals, particularly in enhancing the quality of life and reducing crime in our communities, to ensure our efforts are fully integrated with the county's priorities, we respectfully request a follow-up meeting with the Board to explore how Camden Missions can collaborate with you to address some of these challenges. In closing, we want to thank you for your time and consideration. Camden Missions is committed to being a strong partner and building safer and more connected Camden County, and we look forward to the possibility of working closely with you to achieve these shared goals. Thank you again for your attention and for the dedicated work you do to serve our community.
Anything to add, James?
I just want to thank you all for what you do. Silver, you have helped me with mental health. Mr. Turner, Mr. Goodman actually helped when I did my dissertation. You always stop by and check in on us, so thank you all for what you do. Brother Sean, thank you for letting us come, and again, we just want to keep Camden County safe and just bring it all together. So, Mr. Laney, thank you all for what you do.
All right, thank you. This brings us to our first public comment of the night. I think we limited it to three minutes and agenda items only. Is anybody registered?
Yes. First up, we have Memzy Walensky.
First, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Memzy Walensky. My husband Steve and I live at 252 Horse Stamp Church Road.
Can you pull the microphone a little closer to me?
Sorry. This is not my forte. We live at 252 Horse Stamp Church Road. The property connected to the property in question tonight. My husband was planning on speaking tonight but got stuck working 48. He's an engineer for Brunswick Fire Department, so if anybody knows how that goes. So, I am his last-minute stand-in, so excuse me for this. My husband and I strongly believe in individual liberty. We believe that everybody should be able to do as they please as long as rules and laws are followed...sorry, excuse me, and that they do not bring harm to others. In saying that, I would like...I would not stand in the way of someone developing property they own in whatever manner they wish, as long as rules and laws are followed and no harm would come to others. In this situation, that would be us and our neighbors. Last week, the Planning and Zoning Board was kind enough to require a 20-foot buffer and a 10-foot solid privacy fence...sorry, to help maintain our privacy because our small backyard backs directly up to this property, and we would have lost most of our beautiful shade trees, and for that, we are extremely grateful. What is left now in our hope is that the rules and laws are followed and the appropriate studies and plans to ensure that rain and water runoff does not flood our yard any more than it already does, and that any chemicals, solvents, and pollutants do not negatively affect our well, which is located 50 feet from this property. I am just an accounting clerk for a nonprofit. I do not know all the laws and regulations for this type of development, so I have no other choice than to put my faith and prayers in this board and the property owners to make sure that the laws and regulations are followed, in the hopes that as the county progresses forward with growth and change, that we are not left as victim in the wake of that progress. So, to sum up our concerns about this property changing to commercial and passing the special use permit, are the additional flooding issues and the ground contamination, and is there anything you can and will do to ensure that we won't end up with flooding issues or contamination of any kind to our drinking water? That is all. Thank you.
Anybody else registered?
Next, we have Sherri Taylor.
Is this about the same issue?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead. But when we get to that part of the open public meeting, there'll be a comment period there as well that you could speak on this. So, you can either do it now or then, so...
If it pleases the...
Doesn't matter to me.
Let's go ahead and do it now, since I'm already here at the podium. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sherri Taylor, and I reside at 319 Horse Stamp Church Road. I am a lifelong citizen of Waverly. My family has settled in this area, been settled in this area since the 1800s, so I am a stakeholder and am very much in love with my hometown. I was not aware that there was a potential rezoning of this property that was in...that is within 1,000 feet of my bedroom up until last week. I did pull the permits from the county development office, and I did note one alarming fact, that no attempt has been made to determine wetlands or other environmental issues, if any, that may affect the subject property. Now, I know that this may fall under the special use consideration, but in my mind and in the mind of my neighbors, this is all consolidated into one, so please allow me to speak on both at this moment. I'd also like to discuss or to bring to your attention the potential environmental disruptions, not only the possible contamination of our groundwater, and please be aware that, as you all know, North Camden does not have a public water or sewer system. We all have private wells, and I would like for some sort of study to be done as to the nearest private wells and how accidental leakages could affect the safety of our drinking water, as well as just the ground contamination in general. Another thing I would like to bring to the Board's attention that, as we all know, I don't wish the property owner or the owner of the company any bad luck whatsoever, but sometimes businesses close for various reasons. And this is a structure of considerable size. It is not your standard storefront. It does have a manufacturing or a metal building that will be used to fabricate parts of metal storage sheds and houses, as I understand. So, we're talking about a substantial footprint on this property. That's not...if this building decides to close or move, that's gonna leave the community with a building that will not be easily converted or cheaply renovated or rented or leased or purchased, and I am also concerned about how that's going to affect the community at large. If it falls into disrepair, we could have vagrants, we could have an increase in vandalism and in theft of homes nearby. I am requesting that the Board put this vote in abeyance until the owners and the property...well, the owners and the manager of the company make sure that all environmental studies, including a wetlands study, have been conducted.
Your time's up, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Anybody else registered?
That's all registered.
Anybody else which will speak on an agenda item?
Speak on what?
On an agenda item. Anything that's on the agenda.
Good evening. Dawn Gray, St. Mary's. I'd like to speak on the fifth item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. Included in the minutes was my declaration that I would be filing a criminal complaint against the members of the Board that participated in violating the Open Meetings Act and violating the Georgia State Constitution. I'm here tonight to say that if the vote that was taken during the discussion period of the soccer complex and the mini golf course, I will leave here tonight and I will file an additional criminal complaint under OCGA 16-4, which is conspiracy to commit a crime, and the crime being OCGA 48-8, which has been clarified under Dickey v. Story, in which the Georgia Supreme Court states, "Therefore, as a matter of law, there can be no excess SPOS proceeds so as long as the revenue is available and the projects specified in the resolution imposing the tax have not been completed." There are several items which were voted on the referendum for SPOS 8, which have not been completed. Therefore, by voting to approve the Thomas &amp; Hutton proposal to continue with using what you're considering to be excess SPOS funds, as well as already the payment of the over $59,000 to Thomas &amp; Hutton, if that in fact was made via SPOS funds, you're in violation of OCGA 48-8. And by raising your hand in approval, Commissioner Brand, Casey, and Turner, you are now in violation of OCGA 48-8 because it states, "Where together, one or more person conspires to commit any crime and does an overt act to effect the objective of the conspiracy, the conspiracy being using the excess SPOS funds prior to completion of the projects" that we voted on as citizens in SPOS state. Now, I recognize that you guys may not have information available with regards to the actual numbers that...with the usage of the fields, but I would direct you to the 2021 master plan, which clearly outlines the needs of both the soccer complex as compared to the other county-owned park Howard's people whereby organized sports are conducted. I think that you'll see in 2021, June of 2021, that there was no indication from the actual needs assessment that was taken that indicated a need for improving the parking area to increase it, nor was there any identified need with regards to changing or restructuring the maintenance building. So, once again, I just want to let you know that that's a concern, and Mr. Turner, once again, if your issue is safety, then I would direct you to the master plan where it speaks of the county and the PSA being in noncompliance with the playground safety standards of the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission and the International Play Equipment Manufacturer Association. So, why don't we go ahead and obey the law and take care of those safety needs? Thank you.
Note takers? I will say one thing. Ms. Gray, you got up here a couple of weeks ago saying that the county commissioners let you do work for the sheriff. That is not true. We have not voted on any kind of contract with you to work for the sheriff. If the sheriff wants to have a contract with you, he can, but I would revise him to have a lawyer at least look at it. But anyway, we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman?
No, ma'am.
Yes, sir, you called me out, so you violated your own rules. So, I'd like to quote where...
Ms. Gray? Ms. Gray, do you want to be removed? All right. This time, we need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and reconvene a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to recess the regular meeting and convene a...
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to recess the regular meeting and convene a public hearing.
Second.
We got a first and second. All in favor? Okay, Joey. Part of this reason why I brought that up a while ago is when we have a controversial item such as this, this may be, you get a 10 minutes for, 10 minutes against, then whoever the applicant is has a five-minute rebuttal. So go ahead, Joey.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Commissioners. First item up tonight will be a request to rezone two parcels with a combined acreage of 3.65 from agricultural forestry to commercial general. Now, these parcels are located in District 1 at the corner of U.S. Highway 17 and High Horse Stamp Church Road in Waverly. Along with this request would be a future land use change on the parcel that fronts Horse Stamp Road for mixed use to commercial. I would like to notate that at the interchange, the future land use, as you can see, they're all highlighted in red, the future land use is already in existence for commercial at that interchange. Now, this is a plat that the owner has submitted, a recombination plaque, to combine these two parcels back together, and this plat will be contended upon approval of the rezon, rezon. This is an aerial view of the two parcels, of the surrounding zonings. As you can see, they're currently zoned AF. This is aerial view of the parcels located at the corner of Highway 17 and Horse Stamp Church Road. Now, the owner is requesting a rezoning to establish a feed store and to construct and sell prefabricated sheds. This is a concept plan that was submitted to us. As you can see here, a proposed building, as well as two entrances off of Horse Stamp and the parking lot. And as you all know, this will actually have to go through the permitting process if it is approved, along with all the engineering plans, stormwater plans, and all the et cetera of the plans that we will need that are required. Now, the Planning Commission does recommend approval on this item with the following conditions: a 20-foot-wide, undisturbed natural buffer, followed by a 10-foot-high solid high, I mean, solid foot, 10-foot-high solid wood fence to be installed around parcel 073A, 043A. And this buffer will be installed where the red line is highlighted on this parcel. So that is the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Part of the stormwater, stormwater is not supposed to leave the property, right?
In the correct way it is, yes. And all that will be engineered, is required to be engineered.
All right. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this item? You want to speak in favor?
Yes, sir. Robert Moore, 509 Westgate Circle, St. Mary's. I have no horse in the fight. I don't know this owner, but since no one was jumping up to show they were pro-business, pro-development, I thought I'd be that voice. I believe in private property. Clearly, if I'm reading this right, this is a venture by the McCarthy family, which I think has been a very influential family here in Camden County. And if they feel that there's a market for a feed store and a shed sales, we'll let them do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else which speak in favor? All right, anybody which should speak in opposition? Come on up.
Okay, so that's my house, and you can see that my backyard is right there. My well is in that corner, and that's why I'm so concerned about this is the, from what I understand, it is not just a shed sales and a feed store. It is manufacturing or putting together metal buildings and a feed trailer or some such thing on the side selling feed in addition to building sheds. So with that comes the industrial side of things, which is paint and solvents and chemicals and such. And I understand that studies will be done and that rainwater should flow the correct way away from our house. I'm not sure how that's done because I'm not in construction, but as of right now, there is a solid river wet that runs all the way to the left side of our house, all the way through the back end. And it stays wet all year long. So when it rains, our yard floods and the property behind us floods with any rain, not just hurricanes or tropical storms or several days of rain. So that's my concern. And we don't have a deep well. We don't have an eight-foot well down to the aquifer. We have a normal well, and our septic is back there, too. This is also, and I'm very thankful for the 20-foot buffer because that are, those are our trees that we, that shade our backyard. It's, you know, our five grown kids, when they bring our four grandchildren over, that's where we play, our pool's back there. I do believe everybody should be able to use their property as they see fit. I just want to make sure that everything is put in place so that we are not negatively harmed. Our realtors already advised us that the markability of our land, of our house will be affected by this. So should we want to leave the area and have more privacy in the future, we are already, will be negatively affected. So that is all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Come on up, ma'am.
Thank you for allowing me to do this. My property is strictly diagonal from Ms. Lewinsky's. I'm at 073A, the two parcels, C and E. I'd like to address the flow of the storm rain or the flow of the property, drainage of the property, I guess is the correct term. There is a three-foot fence, I mean, three-foot ditch that the county dug in front of my property. So anything that drains off of the proposed site that is here for rezoning is going to drain in front of my house, go straight down the road into a small wetland area. So I am concerned about contamination of the water and the soil in that area. And as far as, I agree with the gentleman. I mean, people who own property should be allowed to use the property as they see fit. However, as long as it does not negatively affect the environment, both the creatures and the soil, as well as the aesthetics and the noise. I understand that we're in the county, so we do not have strict noise ordinances, and I have been assured that operation of the company will be within reasonable office hours. However, I am currently staying at home. I'm retired. And I would also like to say, you know, I don't wish this gentleman any ill will whatsoever. He has a good reputation. As far as this feed store, I think that this property would be better suited for a feed store, and that would be more of a benefit to the community than a fabrication or a site to put together components for larger buildings to be erected in other areas of the county. So those are my main concerns. And also, I have some concern about, are they going to receive enough business at this location? I mean, when was the last time that a traffic study was done on Highway 17 or on Horse Stamp Road near this location? I understand that there was a business a little further down from us on Highway 17 that recently moved closer to Kingsland because they didn't, they weren't receiving the type of, I guess, advertising from people passing their business on Highway 17. So I think that's something else that perhaps needs, the owners need to take another look at. Now, the McCarthys own a substantial amount of land in both Camden and neighboring counties, and I feel certain that the McCarthy family and the Boyd family will be able to find an alternative site, and I wish them well. I really do. But I don't think you can ignore long-term, potentially long-term negative effects when you're looking at something that is this close to what is mainly a residential community. And I do ask you to take that in consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else which speak against? The applicant's not here to rebut it, so.
No. I mean, if you've got some questions, I'll be glad to answer if I can.
Well, if you want to come up and...
My name is Matt Jordan. I'm representing Mr. McCarthy. I totally get the neighbor's concerns. The one thing I can say is that we have a very diligent planning and building department. They're going to make the applicant get a lot of engineering done. They'll have to do wetland studies. They'll have to be, be environmental studies done. There's a Georgia Clean Water Act that the state has. I'm sorry, I'm addressing the...
Speak a little closer to the microphone, but...
The applicant will have to follow the Georgia Clean Water Act. If there's any, if you see silt in your ditch, you can make a phone call. The state will come out. They'll have to rectify it. The, the, I guess, the proposed owner, Jared Boyd, has told me there'll be no painting of the buildings. The buildings come pre-colored. They just assemble them there. There will be cutting and things of that nature, but there'll be no painting and no chemicals used at the site. But as far as the environmental concerns go, I, I think you can put your trust in the planning and building department. They're, they're very strict in this county, and they'll make sure that it's done correctly. I can assure you of that. And if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer anything I can.
All right. Next item, Joey.
Scott, could, Scott, could you forward that? All right. Thank you, sir. Next item might be a request for special use approval to allow the construction and sale of prefabricated sheds on a parcel that is zoned commercial general. This property is located in District 1 and at the corner of Highway 17 and Horse Stamp Church Road in Waverly. Again, this is the highlighted view of the parcels and the aerial of the parcels. This is a concept plan that was submitted to our office. Again, this is the proposed metal building with the two entrances, as well as the parking lot. This request is to allow the owner to sell prefabricated sheds on this parcel. So Planning Commission does recommend approval of this zone of, I mean, the special use.
All right. Back to the public again. Anybody which to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? The same? Yeah. All right. If anybody wishes to speak about it, we'll move on. Now, we need a motion to adjourn the public here and reconvene to regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second? All in favor? All right, we're back in the regular meeting. Items 1 and 2 have been removed, so this brings us to item number 3, the voting delegate for the ACCG Legislative Conference. Can I get a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that you be that delegate.
Okay.
And I second that motion.
We've got a first and a second. All in favor?
It's a lot of fun. I did it for seven years.
Sure you don't want to keep doing it? All right, you're back up, Joey.
Just changed locations. First item up would be a request to rezon two parcels with a combined acreage of 3.65 from agricultural forestry to commercial general. And along with this would be a future land use change for parcel 073A, 043 for mixed use to commercial. These parcels are located in District 1 at the intersection of U.S. Highway 17 and Horse Stamp Church Road. Planning Commission does recommend approval with the following conditions: a 20-foot-wide, undisturbed natural buffer, followed by a 10-foot-high solid wood fence to be installed around parcel 073A, 043A.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second? We got a first and a second. Any discussion?
With the provisions that Mr. Jacoby outlined, I'm in favor of it.
So that's part of your discussion? Well, let's call for a vote then. All in favor? Motion passes. All right, request for a special use to allow construction and sale of prefabricated sheds on the parcel, Joey?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Now, these parcels are located in District 1 at the same location we just indicated. So the Planning Commission does recommend approval of this item.
Well, I'll make a motion on this item to approve it with one stipulation that no painting occurs on the property.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number, well, this will be number four now.
Good evening, Commissioners. I come before you requesting approval to purchase two E1-1500 GPM rescue pumpers. We have frontline units that was purchased in 2015. We have replaced three of our older units in the last 24 months, thanks to you. Our reserve unit was purchased in 2000. Fireline is offering these two units at a discounted purchase price. The two units being offered to Camden County Fire Rescue will be available later at the end of this month. If we do not purchase these two units now and order, and order, you know, and we wait a later date, the estimated delivery time will be 24 months, and there's a proposed increase in the cost of the upcoming production year. The three units, these units available now meet the same specification as the units we purchased in the last 24 months.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of these two fire pumpers at a $75,000 savings if we do it now.
Second that.
The first and second. Any more discussion? Chief?
Can we have the, the older ones and maybe use them to clean out ditches and drains?
I believe we're going to transfer one over to Public Works, I believe.
Okay.
So they can go out and help clean ditches.
Okay.
All right, we got first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Are you going to do the bunker gear or?
Those are great.
The other chief's going to do it.
Good morning, Commissioner, or good evening, morning. I'm still on morning. That's bad.
All right.
I'm here to ask the approval to purchase eight sets of bunker gear from 10-Eighths for the total of $26,510.88. This gear is to be used for the new, the eight new recruits that just graduated. We normally use gear out of our warehouse, but at this time, we have gone through that gear for previous employees that we have hired. So at this time, we will be asking for the bunker gear approval, and this will be coming out of the unincorporated fund.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the purchase of the bunker gear, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Good evening.
You doing, Julie?
I'm requesting that the board approve 3 hazard mitigation grants through the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. We received $236,011.50 to develop a storm water management plan. The county is responsible for a little over $15,000, and GMA will provide $10,000 in match. GMA will also provide $9,000 in management cost. We also received $64,500 to elevate a repetitive loss flood-prone property. The match will be provided by the property owner, and GMA will provide $2,570 in management costs. Additionally, we received $85,041.90 to purchase and install a generator at the PSA as it serves as the county's emergency shelter. The county is responsible for $9,449 in match, and GMA will provide $2,552 in management cost. All match required from the county will either be in kind or from the grants match budget. At this time, I would like approval to accept grants as presented.
Okay, we've got them broken out one at a time on here, so can I get a motion on the first item?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
This is for the storm water management plan, and this is for the unincorporated county.
Yes.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? This is something we tried to do years ago with the cities, and they kind of balked at it, so we're going it alone, so. All in favor? All right, next item is the grant award for the elevation. This is, this will help out with the, our flood, you know, local flood insurance and such. Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the acceptance of the Georgia Emergency Management Agency grant.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, this is the award for the generator. We use the PSA for a shelter during hurricane events, so this is a good thing. It's needed it for a long time. Can I get a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve the generator.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. Do you want to come down?
You got a big check? This brings us to calendar. Any changes, Sheikah?
No changes.
County Administrator comments?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have is just to thank staff for all their hard work, especially on the grants, and Chief Smith and your staff as well, for all the investments that your department's made within Fire Rescue. It's been very, very rewarding, and if any of y'all have seen the Fire Rescue Facebook page, we've done some videos recognizing some of their staff, as well as some of the new pieces of equipment. So a lot of major investment in public safety here recently, and we're continuing to do that even through the grants, even with Public Safety, or Public Works, excuse me. So a lot of big things on the horizon. Chairman, you mentioned a storm water management plan. We were trying to do that 6 years ago. It's hard to believe it's taken that long now just to get the funding for it, but we're really, really excited about that. Even with the transportation grant we also received, there's a lot of things in store for us in our near future, so a lot of exciting times coming our way. Thank you.
All right, this brings us to our final public comments of the night. They'll be limited to 3 minutes. Any registered speakers?
We have 1 registered.
Bob Bauer, Harriet's Bluff. I think it's been about a year now that the walkway out there at Brown Town, I see you all fixed it, got it all repaired, it's all ready to go, but I noticed it's got a big sheet of plywood up across the front of the opening of the walkway with a "No Trespassing" sign on it. Good work, people, good work. When is the drainage in this county going to get fixed? The ditches need to be cleaned. They used to dig them out, but for some reason, they're not digging them anymore. I don't know why. Weeds are getting deep, trees are growing in them. About 5 years ago, everything looked really nice around here, but going to hell in a handbag now. And the equipment over at the soccer field, who owns that? PSA own it? Where'd the money come from that bought it? Splotch 8? That tells me then it's tax money. If it's tax money, it belongs to the people of the county. So we need to get that out, get it in operation, and get her, get her going. And when Jody Smith was out and about, right after the hard rains that we had a few weeks ago, it shows that some of the culverts were smashed. When they going to get repaired? We'll worry about that a later date, I guess, down the road. Of course, got to get that walkway done first. And I would say we need better management that needs to get out of the office and get out on the street and see for his or herself what's going on as far as all this goes. That's all I got to say. Just do the best you can. Ain't been good enough yet.
Anybody else registered?
No.
Come on up, sir.
My name is Greg House, and I'm in Brown Town. I'm kind of ill-prepared for this, but I just wanted, this is going on the public record, so as the Commissioners, and I thank you because the guy's a direct report to you, what's going on is over the weekend, I don't know if you saw it, but all of a sudden, and this is TV ads, and I'm getting buried on my computer with it, is there's a company in North Florida that is marketing mini-homes, and that are, and the guy went back and forth with the guy, and he says, "Man, I drop it off at your party, at your property, you can live in it." And I know better than that. A year ago, I was doing some, looking at a property, and I went in to check out Wells and Septic, and the guy at the permit office, I'm not going to throw out any names without his permission, he said that the county was aware of 27 issues where people were living on lots in RVs, you know, that had no license plates, wheels pulled off them, stuff like that, and they weren't going to do anything. It was their policy to not do anything unless they received 2 complaints about that. And all I'm doing, I'm ill-prepared, like I said, because it was the holiday weekend. I've done some research. We have regulations regarding RV parks. We have regulations regarding mobile home parks. Well, we got mobile homes in RV parks, and we got RVs in mobile home parks. And it's just becoming an issue. I live in your sector, and I, on the way home, I can take you to 9 places right now where I know people are living in these things. And I'm a compassionate guy. I mean, people are having hard times, they need a place to live. But my big thing is where is the sewage going? If they're tapping off and going into somebody's yard and their sewage, that Septic tank isn't rated for more? So anyway, I'm just going on the public record now. I will do more research, and I will have more answers for you, but in Camden County, this is becoming a problem. And I know for a fact that Brantley County right now is doing stuff where cops are showing up, and if there's an RV, they want access to that RV and make sure that nobody's living in it. So I'll come back another time, and we'll talk more about it, but as the county, you all need to know that this is starting to get out of hand. We're not in the cities, but out in the unincorporated area where you don't really know what's going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dr. Dawn Gray, St. Mary's, Georgia. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I challenge you to quote me where I stated that I had a contract or any relationship with the county Commissioners. As a matter of fact, when Mr. Turner suggested that Salt Family Services try to obtain the $40,000 which was left over of the opioid money after Drug Court received $60,000, I made a conscious decision to not apply for those funds because I did not want to be legally tied to the current administration. Again, I'm not bound to ask permission from the county administration or from this board here to volunteer my services. I do welcome you and anyone in the community that would like to come to the First Fridays with First Responders, which will occur at 0900 this Friday at the Sheriff's Office Training Center. I'm proud of the work we do. I'm also proud of the fact that we currently have 9 law enforcement officers and 4 firefighters and 1 EMT that we are providing free mental health care. So, no, sir, I challenge you to find where I've stated that we had some contract with you, and I'm proud that our sheriff has supported, as have administrators in other offices with the first responders. But once again, it was never said. Thank you.
Robert Moore, St. Mary's, doctorate in humane letters of sarcasm and satire. I sure approve that you, that you approve the rezoning up there because there may be some children that if, without pre-built sheds, may commit suicide. That leads me into the putt-putt golf. I do have a 16-year-old and a soon-to-be 9-year-old, and I really think the best way to keep them occupied is if you just give them some touchscreens and some Wi-Fi and sugary drinks, especially with red number 5 in it, because that's what they would prefer more than a putt-putt. So I would like to advocate for the 5 soccer families that I do know, a couple from workout on the base, and also some from my church, that they are vested. I still have yet to see an official Camden County putt-putt professional league popping up or anything that has the same effort as the kids that take the pitch and play every season. So I hope that you show a little bit of loyalty to the vested families of the soccer community, and as the first speaker, if the soccer fields, if that's our er of tax dollars, then let's renovate it, let's rejuvenate it and give, I mean, if we're going to go and put a Jumbotron for the football players, then let's give the soccer families the similar type of investment. And until I see, you know, coordinated jerseys and Facebook groups and maybe, you know, fundraising-type events for the Camden Putt-Putt League, maybe down at the Crooked River State Park, then they have a dog in the fight. But let's take care of the soccer families. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, Commissioners, members of the board. My name is Moses Nguyen Jr. I live at 166 Williams Place in Waverly, Georgia, down in Spring Bluff, end of the county, and we having a problem with the road. I know they say that's a private road, but we live back in that area, and we pay taxes just like everybody else, regardless of what kind of road you want to call it. Now, that road got so bad during this rainy period back there, we couldn't hardly come out from there to go to work and go back home. It's done dried out a little bit now. I took pictures of it, if you want to see it. It done dried out a little bit now, it's getting better, but when it start back raining, it'll get just right back like a war. Now, I know without a shadow of a doubt that y'all could do something about that road. And another thing, the guy that live up on Dover Bluff Road that blocked the road off and put a chain across the road so we can't go out that way, he may own the property that go across the road, but that road been through there over 100 years, and nobody never blocked that road off. Now, I don't believe that he got the ability to do that. I believe you all can do something about that. Now, I talked with one of the Commissioners, I don't see him in here tonight, and he said there wasn't nothing he can do, but he ain't but 1 person. And I believe if y'all put y'all heads together, y'all can do something about that road, because we live in there, there are paramedics come in there to get me, and they had to stop at the chain and walk to my house to get me, to take me to the hospital. This may not be my last time up here. I don't know if y'all want to do anything or not, but I got to start somewhere. I appreciate y'all, appreciate the time. But that road at the end next to 17, I see you light going up, next to 17, coming in from 17 going around where I live at, it gets so bad, we can't hardly leave home. So I appreciate it if y'all would try to do something to that road. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir, is that Williams Place Road? Okay, that's what I was thinking. Thank you.
We'll look into it, see what we can do. All right, anybody else? All right, seeing now we need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, convene a executive session for the purpose of discussing items exempt under OCGA 50143B4. This is an information technology-related in real estate.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes described.
Second.
Got a first and a second? All in favor? Are you ready? We need a motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene the regular meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Got a first and a second. All in favor? We're back in the regular meeting. Any action from the executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to renew some software agreement in the amount of $26,981.50.
I'll second that. All in favor? Motion carries.
I have another one, Mr. Chairman. A motion to approve the hardware refresh at amount of $418,853.88.
Second.
Got a first and a second. All in favor?
And also, also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into discussion with the City of Woodbine concerning some property use.
Well, I'll second that. All in favor? Motion carries. Anything else?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion we adjourn this meeting. Second.
First and second, all in favor? We're done.